And to talk about the program and more about the Coalition for Civic Engagement, here's Joel Wong.
Hi, my name is Joel Wong. This Fremont Candidate Forum is sponsored by the Coalition for Civic Engagement, a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization. It includes a diverse group of organizations, including Civic Leadership USA, Asian Pacific Island American Public Affairs, APAPA, the National Asian American United, of which I'm the president, the Panja Foundation, Hindu American Foundation, Hindu American PAC, the Asian American Unity Coalition, AAUC, Indo-American Community Federation, IACF, and the Federation for Indian and Indian Desporer Studies, FIDS. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. We have a couple of ground rules for this broadcast. And for those of you watching online on Facebook and on YouTube, and of course, our partner Ding Ding TV, as well as we're broadcasting on via TV, on air and online. If you'd like to engage with the candidates, we are taking questions at the end of each session. So feel free to jot a note on our YouTube or Facebook pages, and we will try to address your questions. So we have a couple of ground rules for the participants. Obviously, we want to keep things courteous and professional. We're going to try to abstain from personal attacks, even though that seems to be very popular in modern day politics. We do have time limits on statements. So we're going to start off with basically a two-minute opening statement from every single candidate. And if there are rebuttals, for example, if there is a charge directed at a certain candidate, we're going to give them 30 seconds to respond to rebutts that. And let's try to be mindful of time since we do want to get a whole lot of voices out there and engage the whole community. So and of course, let's stick to the topics and the questions that are asked. So those are some of the ground rules. And let's begin now with the Fremont City Council race. We're going to begin with District Six. We have actually six candidates in that race. Yogi Chug, Teresa Cox are here today, John C. Capala, Charles Liu, Andrew Quang Nguyen, and Roman Reed. Three of the four responded but had conflicts. Andrew did not respond. But we're very pleased to have Yogi Chug and Teresa Cox in attendance to discuss their quest to be-
My name is Charles Liu, I'm also here.
Oh, you're-
Charles Liu's here too, yeah.
Terrific. Good to see you, Charles. I was told that you were not going to be here, so I'm glad to see you here. Great. So we'll have Charles, Teresa, and Yogi speaking about their quest to represent District Six. Let's start in alphabetical order. So Teresa, please tell us folks, tell folks about yourself. You have two minutes.
Hello, everyone. I'm Teresa Cox. I have been serving as Aloney College Community Trustee for the last 12 years. I have been with Aloney since we started the Science Center, which just opened this past January, thanks to all of you in the community that helped support it. I've also had been appointed by Obama and by the current administration to serve in the role of helping to create jobs and support businesses. So this is a U.S. Department of Commerce appointment that makes me very unique compared to the other candidates. I've also had two children that have been raised in the local school of Irvington as a teen mom and also involved as the Horner School Officer. I also have been involved in terms of the city of Fremont, appointed to the Economic Development Commission for the last eight years. And in addition, led the trade mission to China to help expand on opportunities. Currently, my focus is to get everyone back to work and be able to create jobs, local hire, and also to help get our businesses up and running as well as have affordable housing. It's a pleasure to be here today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Teresa. Now let's go to Yogi Chug.
Good morning. Robbie, thank you very much for giving us this opportunity and the partners that have come together this morning. My name is Yogi Chug. I've been a Fremont resident for 35 years. Over this period of time, there's been a sense of engagement in this community that has been something that has come to me from a very personal story. Now, personal stories are out of an immigrant. To come back and understand that as people have helped uplift you, it's a responsibility to come back and do the same thing in return. My wife Monica and I, as you know, Dr. Monica Chug, she's a, she has a practice in Fremont. She's a rotarian, and she's also a domestic violence advocate as well. We raised our two children who've gone to our Fremont public school systems. And over this period of time, some of the greatest accomplishments and privileges that I've had is serving within our nonprofits community. As many of you know, that involved in the South Asian community and the API community has been something that I've been very, very passionate about. Some of the nonprofits are the Fremont Education Foundation, Drivers for Survivors, and the Fremont Fourth of July Parade, along with the Festival of Globe and many of the activities that I've worked along with many of you that are hosting this today. I've also been a two-term planning commissioner, which gave me a real great opportunity to understand what's the general plan? What's our zoning ordinance? What are the limitations of government? As an Economic Development Commissioner, I've been tasked with visiting companies all across Fremont and recognizing that there are certain unique needs. And the COVID and the pandemic really exposed a tremendous amount of vulnerabilities that really just made me compel upon the fact that what can we do to make a difference? Being a lifelong resident of Fremont, recognized that the decisions we're going to make on this council are going to have profound implications over the next decade. And based upon conversation with many people, I felt that it was important to come back and serve in this role where my experience in corporate America, where I ran a major division for Sony. I'm a small business owner right now, recognizing the nuances of our economic decisions that we're going to have to make. So combination of that and being able to come back and determine that will I be able to be effective on day one? That's really the motivation and the inspiration behind running for Fremont City Council in District Six. I also believe that the question about priorities just can't be come up and just articulate those. I've had conversations with over 200 residents in Fremont, and based upon that, my priorities are a COVID and economic recovery, strong partnership between Fremont schools and city council, really putting our arms around development and affordability, lack of infrastructure, school capacity, and the conversations around transportation congestion, protecting our businesses, protecting our employers to get jobs secure, to ensure that this doesn't come back and permeate into a challenge in our societies. Many people in Fremont have chosen to be a part of Fremont for its good schools and strong safe communities. I've urged a commitment to protect our public safety, to keep our community safe, but usher a new chapter of public safety. And last but not least, what inspires me is Fremont as the fourth largest city in the region, one of the most affluent in the regions. We've got to put our arms around the homelessness crisis. And if we don't get to the root cause of this problem, this challenge will not go away. And last but not least, the conversation I've heard from people all across Fremont is they don't understand why our government doesn't make simple decisions to complex problems. What is the reason why we're unable to push our city council to make the decisions that are required to make this community a good community? It is a pledge and a commitment that I've made, and I'll wrap with this. I want to run a people-powered campaign that centered on what's best for the interest of Fremont. Thank you.
Thank you, Yogi.
I would like to find out who is taking the time because that was almost close to four minutes.
Teresa, we'll do a better job about that. Again, if everyone could be respectful about the time, we'd appreciate it. So let's now give two minutes to Charles Liu. Charles, please go right ahead.
I will adhere to my time limit. Thank you. So, good morning. My name is Charles Liu, and I want to thank the organizers for putting this forum together. So I'm a longtime Fremont resident, and I started my company, sold a company in Fremont 12 years ago. And I'm married and have two daughters. My daughter actually went to Irvington High School. So the COVID-19 pandemic has made the following top priorities much more challenging: public safety. So I will work with the council to adequately fund the police to maintain public safety. Small businesses and survival and jobs. We need to create a friendly business environment, lower taxes and fees, and simplify our permitting process so that we can attract more businesses to Fremont. Affordable housing. And we need to make sure that we span our affordable housing inventory and make Fremont a livable and walkable community. I mean, to meet the following challenges, the above challenges, I am proposing that Fremont provide free public Wi-Fi in a number of places, in our public parks, sporting facilities, and downtown commercial districts. That will be part of the solution to meet many of the challenges. And I'm currently the planning under the seven commissioners in Fremont. I'm the Rotary Cup of Fremont President-elect, and I've also served as the past president of CBC. I have excellent working relationships with everyone, pretty much everyone, and that is extremely important in this increasingly polarizing environment. So please vote for me to be the next Fremont City Council member in District Six. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. All right. So we've heard now three statements from the folks in District Six that are here today. And the first question, I think Yogi just brought it up, is homelessness. It's been an issue throughout the Bay Area. Really, it's a, it's an issue throughout a lot of the world. Can, let's discuss homelessness and the hindrances to addressing homelessness, specifically in Fremont as we see a rise in homelessness. Teresa, let's start with you, and you have one minute. Teresa-
Homelessness is a growing problem in Fremont. I know that the city council has already decided to open up the navigation. I disagree in the way that it should have been brought about. It should have been something that should have been voted and had input from all the residents of Fremont before committing us to $9 million project. The way to deal with homelessness is we need to be able to figure out with the results that are happening. Right now, I don't have any other data to be able to say if the program is going to be successful since it just launched in August and see how long it will progress. And the people that are being admitted to the Navigation Center, which I understand is about 25 people, we need to evaluate and find out how successful the program is and see, from working with social workers, working with the state and the county, to figure out if this is something that we need to continue moving forward. Because there's a lot of things that we, that from the public standpoint, we don't know how the people were selected, how they came to Fremont, how are we solving their personal medical or mental issues that need to be addressed. So I'm still on the fence in terms of seeing what the next steps are with the homelessness since it just opened the Navigation Center in August.
Thank you, Teresa. Yogi, you have one minute to address homelessness in Fremont.
You know, homelessness is a, is a rising issue in Fremont. In the last two years, our numbers have gone up over 225 unhoused. The conversation about no two people having the same path to homelessness and the conversation about no two people having the same path out of homelessness is a conversation we need to have. The early intervention and the root cause analysis of how do you help those that need to come back and get back on their feet is an issue we have to deal with. This issue will not necessarily go away. But at the moment, homelessness has been taking a tremendous amount of resources, both our public safety agencies and as well as our Human Services Agency. The Housing Navigation Centers, Navigation Center that was open, I would agree, did not articulate a process in which people's input was taken. And what we did is we picked one neighborhood against the other. It's an issue we have to deal. Early intervention. And in regards to the homeless navigation center, I'd like to see some data before we commit more. But in the moment today that we have, we do need to address the conversation about how do we house those, especially during COVID. It became extremely clear, the vulnerabilities that we faced.
You're up, overtime, Yogi.
Thank you, Yogi. Thank you, Yogi. Charles Liu, you have one minute to address homelessness in Fremont. I know it's a lot to do in one minute, but please go ahead.
Sure. So the city of Fremont needs to work with the county, state, and federal agencies to get as many resources as we can to combat the increasing homelessness issue in Fremont. We also need to create a stronger public-private partnership to provide the services the homeless people need to, to improve their lives and hopefully find permanent housing. And that's what HNC is intended to do. And I'd agree that the process was a little bit difficult. And there was a lot of residents' input that was not fully considered. But let's see how it works. Perhaps the $9 million for three years is a little bit too high, in my opinion. Some of the money could be used as rent vouchers and to help the, the people who are at risk of falling into homelessness, to prevent people from becoming homeless. So I would say the whole society needs to take care of the homelessness issue. Yes.
Thank you, Charles. We appreciate it. Okay, so now let's get to traffic. Fremont, like every other city in major metropolitan areas, has become extremely congested. Let's talk about your efforts to solve the traffic issue in Fremont and how do you plan to address it? Working with, you know, corporations and other, you know, folks that have a vested interest in keeping Fremont as vibrant as it is. Teresa, you have one minute.
Right now, with the COVID-19, a lot of people are working from home. So I have to say it's a two-phase process. Transportation, first part, is not bad right now in how the traffic is flowing. When we have everyone going back to work and after we have solved the issues with COVID-19, we have to go to phase two. And this is where we're going to have to be standing up for Fremont and say residents first. And we're going to have to prevent people from driving through Fremont as a thoroughfare to get between the two highways. And it's something that we should need to look at. I've talked with other people in other cities. It's been very difficult to take the city of Fremont off WAVE and off of some of these other Google Maps. It's something that we're going to have to pass an ordinance that it's only for Fremont's residents and rerouting it through the proper highways. We also got to use more Lyft, more Uber, more public transportation, and even have free transportation. As a resident of Fremont, to have a free shuttle going around all the parts of Fremont so that we can enjoy some of the monies that we pay for our property taxes can go towards the transportation to allow others to get there. So it's a three-fold process. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. We appreciate it. Yogi, Yogi Chug, you have one minute to discuss the traffic situation in Fremont.
Robbie, thank you for that question. Being in the planning commission, I recognize that as you look at developments, you have to look at the impacts to transportation infrastructure. The transportation gridlock that we currently face today is a regional issue. It's from point A to point B. It's coming in from the north side, south side, east and west, Dublin, Santa Clara, Sunnyvale. So what's the solution? The solution is the regional partnerships are required for this. Second, it's a housing work rebalance. And on economic development in Fremont, that's what we're tasked with. Bring employers closer to Fremont so we can keep people off of our streets. Third, when we're looking to these projects and we're incentivizing our developers to build, it's really building those projects that are near transit. And then as a part of that, recognizing that bart is an opportunity. But then the challenge becomes how do you get the work from the bar station to the last mile or the first mile? Working with our mobility plan, bike paths, in order to ensure that we can come back and get congestion. Transportation is a long process. That's where the infrastructure from the federal government, the state, and the counties needed. But in the meantime, we have to be prudent about our developments. We have to explore every opportunity that comes before us to ensure that the three main chokes that we have in Fremont, the Seopadre, Fremont Boulevard, and Maori, we look at our widening of our streets to allow both bicycles as well as the cars, which is what Fremont really depends upon.
Thank you, Yogi. We appreciate it. Charles Liu, you have one minute to discuss the traffic situation in Fremont.
Thank you. So we must engage with all stakeholders to find workable solutions to cut traffic congestion. So COVID-19 has proven that working from home can be done. So we will work with our regional leaders to rework policies and infrastructure to further this paradigm. Employers are going to be encouraged to move away from the heart of the Silicon Valley and from a more of a central working cluster to a more of a distributed working solution that will further cut traffic. That means let's try to encourage, or encourage them to move their jobs to where people live, to Fremont, to Tri-Vale, the Central Valley. It may be difficult to do, but I'm glad that we, the city of Fremont, has attracted Facebook to set up shop in Allenwood area and hopefully will get more of the jobs to move to the Bay Area, or to move to Fremont. And so we need to work with, work to expand localization of services and that businesses and workers. And we imagine a 21st century traffic-free environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. And just a reminder, let's try to keep this to that one-minute timeframe because we do have a lot to get to, in fact, other folks running for office. Let's get to the next subject, which is a broad one, and that is economic prosperity for Fremont. Do you have goals, targets in mind to keep Fremont on the move and the kind of growth period that it's seen over the last few decades? While keeping an eye on affordability for housing, which is a concern for everybody here in the Bay Area, as well as safety and making sure that we don't have issues with safety as robbery and vehicle theft is higher in Fremont than that, than the national average. Teresa, why don't you get started with it for us?
So I'm not clear on what is really the question because you're talking about three different topics here. So let's clarify which one you want us to look at first.
Let's talk about economic prosperity for Fremont. And as it relates to the, the housing issues that we have, because one thing that we have with a successful city like Fremont is that the housing prices gets out of line. Also, we have a disparity where we have a lot of folks that are being left behind. So you can address that issue as well as safety concerns as we have higher robbery and vehicle theft in Fremont than the national average. And residents are concerned about that. So Teresa, you have one minute.
Okay, so economic prosperity starts with having a job. And the biggest part is working with the employers, working with the city government, working with our county to get people that are not employed to be able to get a job. Because if you don't have a job, you can't buy a house. You can't provide shelter or food for your family. The second part is, besides matching and working with our local big businesses, the other part is how we can work with the developers, work with to get more homes close that are closely built to public transportation. So it breaks down the economic of traveling and reducing the expenses there. So you have the connection with job mapping, with the job companies in the local Fremont community. Then you have the housing that will allow us to be able to be closer to where we live and work and play. The other part is safety. How are we going to monitor it? Because it takes neighborhood. I'm a neighborhood captain. And it is working with our community and working with the police to make sure that we maintain and be good stewards of watching out for each other first and foremost, and then leading that up to following with actions with the police if it's criminal activity that we need to address or noncriminal. We've got to be community leaders and partner together. We're in it together.
Thank you, Teresa. Appreciate that. Yogi Chug, you have one minute to discuss the future of Fremont's economy.
The future of the economy is one where we have a strong COVID and economic recovery, helping our small businesses and employers to protect the local jobs. That's priority number one. Incentivizing them, giving them every help possible in order for them to not only survive but to succeed and thrive. That's really the very focus on economic development. That's exactly what we've done. What are some of the programs we can offer to help them succeed? To the second component, it's exactly that. The housing job rebalance. Bring jobs closer to Fremont, negating the need for people to be able to transport themselves to different cities and get stuck in traffic congestion. There's a life beyond COVID. Third, it's that variability of making sure that Fremont continues to become a livable and a workable place. And as a part of that, the housing affordability is what's important. We need affordability by design. In these mixed-use retail projects, we have housing of all types. And third, safety of a neighborhood is the most important priority. It's frankly one of the only things that takes such a significant portion of our budget. Keeping our community safe, addressing the questions that expose our vulnerabilities in our society, providing resources to help the issues that a uniformed police officer may not always have to deal with. But keeping our community safe, protecting our jobs, growing our job base, building the housing affordability we need is exactly what Fremont needs.
Thank you, Yogi. Charles Liu, please, you have one minute to discuss Fremont's economic future.
Thank you. So in order to have economic prosperity, it's extremely important to create a friendly business environment. By friendly business environment, I mean we have lower taxes and fees and very simplified and streamlined permitting process. And so one of the key things is that a lot of the candidates are saying they are supporting the small businesses. But one of the key differences between me and the rest of the opponents is that I am against Part 15, meaning that I'm against the biggest tax increase in the history of California. If we truly want to develop the economy, we cannot afford to have the largest tax increase at this moment of time. So if we have that tax increase, the small businesses will be decimated. So I think if I'm going to focus on one thing that is extremely important, we must not increase the tax at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. You're on the money with time, so I really appreciate that as well.
Hey, that's what I'm here for.
All right, let's move on to the final question for this round because what I've noticed is we are, we do have other folks that we want to get to. And then I'm going to try to, after this session, after this district session is over, we'll try to come back with some viewer questions as well. Because obviously, there's, there's much more to Fremont than just a handful of questions. But my final question for this round is COVID-19. Obviously, the whole globe has been affected by COVID-19. Talk about the recovery plan for Fremont. Teresa Cox, you have one minute.
The recovery plan for Fremont is number one, we've got to make everything safe for the residents here in Fremont. I'm the only one that has been operating as a leading leader in Fremont, watching to make sure that our students and our community of 10,000 and plus on the campuses of Aloney College are safe. Safe means we're making sure that we have these infrastructure in place, which is no different than what we would do here in Fremont. The other part is that we've got to make sure with this whole recovery that people are safe going to the environments that they work in. That means making sure we have air sanitizers in our buildings, making sure that our classrooms are safe for our teachers and our students. Everyone in the buildings, we've got to make sure that we take precautions to make sure that COVID-19 is safe for everyone. The other part is we still got to work with everyone to get jobs and work with small businesses and do the matching with the big companies because we're going to lean on each other to make it through this part of the time that none of us have ever predicted. It takes working at the state, the local, the county opportunities and across the counties. Because that's why I have so many people working with me, from the mayors to the city council members and other cities and other county board of supervisors because it's going to take all of us to make this work, to bring out the economy, to make the environment safe, and that we share in our information among all of us so that everyone can be successful and thrive coming out of COVID-19.
Thank you, Teresa. Yogi Chug, you have one minute to discuss your plan to help Fremont recover from COVID-19.
COVID recovery and the economic recovery has to go hand in hand. One without the other can't happen, and we have to do it safely. The steps that the city of Fremont took for the testing early was great,[1696.62] The steps that the city of Fremont took for the testing early was great, but we can do better. As we reopen our businesses, being able to provide them the resources they need to reopen successfully is exactly the call that's needed. As a part, being of the Economic Development Commission, that's exactly what we've done. Work with companies and business continuity safely and protecting them, working with our nonprofits to come back and ensure that we can provide to our communities to reopen under these very difficult times. Secondly, some of these programs that we've had to focus on with our local small businesses, our POPA program, reducing the bureaucracy that comes with it, to allow them to succeed and thrive, take every hurdle out. And as a part of the public-private partnerships, those are vital. We've had success with companies providing money to our local businesses. And I've always called for the fact that the small businesses and the main street recovery will only happen when government is committed to helping our small businesses, forging the relationships that are needed to help communities and businesses survive, especially businesses that are minorities and women, because they too need the most help and they traditionally had doors closed on them for the PPP funding.
Thank you, Yogi. And Charles Lu, you have one minute to discuss your plan for recovering from COVID-19.
My plan is to make sure that everybody adheres to the CDC guidelines and make sure the masks are worn by everyone everywhere you go. And make sure you put in, wash your hands and also or use sanitizers. It has been done, it can be done, COVID can be defeated. It has been shown in many other countries if we just adhere to the rule of wearing your masks, because some people say the masks don't work, but in reality, they do. Because even though the virus, it can be, is smaller than the mask, the gaps on the mask, but it's going to still eliminate the largest transmission of the virus. So just wear your mask and have good discipline, and we can defeat COVID. Thank you.
Robbie, was a rebuttal allowed? I'd just like to ask a question.
Yeah, I mean, if you feel like you'd like to rebut to something, please go right ahead. You have 30 seconds.
So Charles, do you believe that the mask, I'm a firm believer that safety first and masks, but do you believe that the mask and safety first alone is going to get us out of a COVID recovery?
Well, if you wear your masks alone, well, obviously, you, everyone needs to wear a mask and you also need to have, on top of that, it would be good to have additional facilities and these devices that some other companies are creating. So when you enter a particular facility, you'll be further disinfected. And that's also going to help.
Let's leave this conversation there. Thank you all, Teresa, Charles, Yogi, for your thoughts. And we want to come back to, but we do want to address District Five and District One, since we have three candidates from those respective races here. I want to kind of group them all together because we're going to ask a similar line of questioning. So let's start with Teresa Kang, who's representing District One, also Dolav Gandler and Raj Salwan from District Five. But I'm going to have you all speak to us in sequence, just to keep things efficient. So let's start with Teresa. Teresa, please introduce yourself. You have two minutes.
Hi, everyone. Hello. Hi, I'm Teresa Kang. I'm running for reelection to the Fremont City Council in District One, because I love Fremont and I want to continue to bring community leadership, city hall that we can be proud of. In only the last two years, being elected by the voters of District One, I've worked to increase minimum wage for workers citywide, take on our housing crisis by advocating for affordable housing and safe shelter with city's navigation center for homeless families, repair the dangerous North Pasio Padre overpass and bring long-awaited community programs to North Fremont. And then the pandemic happened. We have, I think maybe we can get into the recovery plans later on, but I would like to bring smart solutions to public safety that are truly reflective of community needs and spend programs for our senior families and children to keep their lives active and sheltered in place. I'm also honored to have the endorsement of Congressman Swellwell, Senator Barakowski, and Supervisors Richard Vaya Building Trade and former Vice Mayor Anu Natarajan, Fremont teachers and others. Fortunately, I have no opponent in this cycle, but like many of the candidates, my campaign is people power. I've taken the pledge to say no to developers and corporate special interests, and I hope to earn your endorsement in the upcoming November election. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Now let's go to Dolav Gandler. You have two minutes.
Hello, everyone. Good morning. Happy Sunday, and thank you all very much for having me and organizing this panel. I'd just like to start off with a little bit of background about myself. I've been a Fremont resident for the last nine years. I attended Irvington High School, Go Vikings, and am currently studying aerospace engineering at San Jose State University, working as a research assistant with one of my professors. The reason I'm running for Fremont City Council is during the time that I've spent living here, I have gotten deeply engaged in volunteering in my community between our local Little League, our animal shelters, and our senior center. The volunteering experience as well as the time that I've spent living here has allowed me to build some very close, deep, personal connections with Fremont residents of all ages, all racial backgrounds, and all political views. And I want to leverage those connections and those experience during my time, hopefully, on the Fremont City Council. Some of my priorities are increasing pedestrian access on Fremont roads. This is things like expanding our offerings of protected bike lanes, making our bike lane buffers wider to keep our cyclists safer. This is things like adding crosswalks at dangerous intersections, like our warm springs and camper intersection that currently lacks an intersection, forcing residents that want to cross the street in that area to walk about more than three-quarters of a mile in either direction to have a safe crosswalk to use. So I have plans to add a crosswalk there. One of my other main focuses is ensuring a strong economic recovery for the city from the COVID crisis. Some of my plans for this entail things like increasing business grants from the city to our small businesses from a number of $400,000 to around $800,000. This is going to help our local businesses cover payroll and expenses and rent during this crisis and allow our city to secure the very important small business jobs that we need to keep in order to sustain our city's economy, as well as balancing and ensuring that our city's budget stays balanced with responsible spending during this crisis. Once again, thank you all very much for having me, and I look forward to working with you all, answering your questions and getting some feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Dolav. Now, also in District Five is Raj Salwan. Raj, please take it away. You have two minutes.
Well, good morning, everybody. It's a pleasure to be amongst friendly faces. I have had the opportunity to work with many of you in different capacities. My story is a story of Fremont. My family came here approximately 40 years ago for its good schools, safe environment, nice parks, and it was an apartment that we could all live in. In those days, it was very hard to find affordable housing. And so we were able to get a one-bedroom apartment where the five of us could live. And that's not a unique story. That's the immigrant story. And during my time in Fremont, Fremont has changed a lot. Many of you have come on as well, and we've seen the face of Fremont change. And so I feel so indebted to this great city that has given my family so much, given me an opportunity, had a good career, and now my kids are here. Now they're going to our public schools, and so I feel so blessed. So I feel this is the best thing that could ever happen to me, and I want to make sure that everybody has that same opportunity that was given to me. When we first came here, it was much different times. You know, we had to be tough, you know? And so there was not many immigrants, and many of us didn't know whether I was an Indian from India or a Native American. So that's how much education we had to do. So my kids don't have to deal with these issues that I had to explain. And I'm sure, Robbie, you probably had the same issues as well, growing up. These last four years have been fantastic. I have enjoyed serving you. It has been a great honor. And I've tried to be collaborative and tried to make sure I work with the community, work with all of you. And everything I promised in 2016, I delivered on. And I believe that a good government official should be one that honors its promises. And so I ran on four key issues, and one was public safety that we need to add, fully staff our police officers. We didn't have enough, and we're one of the least-staffed cities. And now I'm proud to say we have a fully-staffed police department. I advocated for more community service officers that relieve pressure on our police officers and allow us to deal with those mental health issues and the homeless issues. I advocated for slowing the pace of growth, and I voted on policies that help reduce that growth. I was the only candidate talking about solutions to traffic congestion and specifically cut through traffic. And I'm proud to say that many of my policies were implemented, and we were able to reduce traffic by 33% in my district. And in some streets, we reduced it by 90%. And the last but not least was I wanted to work with the school district, which I have some things that I've done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Raj. Okay, so we'll start with Teresa once again, and then we'll go to Dolav and Raj for question number one. And we're going to go back to the homeless topic, which pervades throughout the Bay Area. But specific to Fremont, let's talk about addressing homelessness. What plan of action do you have? Teresa, you have one minute. You're on mute, Teresa. Please unmute yourself.
All right, okay. So yeah, this is a very important topic and very close to my heart. So as you know, we had put in a navigation center for homeless individuals. And I think, you know, like Teresa mentioned earlier, right now with COVID, we can only accommodate half of the capacity, which is 25 people at a time. And we have a much greater need than that. But more than that, I think, you know, prevention is more, you know, it would be a better solution than, you know, getting people when they're already on the street. The cost would be, it would be more effective and cost a lot less when we can catch people, you know, when they're at the risk of falling into homelessness. So I would really advocate, you know, for cooperating with agencies like a boat services and, you know, help those individuals who are at the risk of falling into homelessness to get the resources they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Dolav, please go right ahead. Discuss homelessness. You have one minute.
Thank you very much for the question. So homelessness in the Bay Area is obviously a very pervasive problem, but I think it's a bit of a unique problem in the city of Fremont. Given that we are such a, overall and the whole, a very affluent area with many of our residents being above the average median income for the entirety of the Bay Area, when you look at homelessness in the Fremont area, I think you have to address the problem slightly differently. Because many of the people that are homeless in the city are people that are currently working and are making a good salary, but are spending, but were either forced out of their homes because they were spending over 50% of their salaries on rent or their house, the price of their mortgage was simply excessively priced. So I think we need to be looking at solving the homeless crisis from angles of, like there's been a lot of discussion about the homeless navigation center, which I think is a very admirable effort. However, I don't think that efforts just like just building homeless navigation centers are going to take Fremont to the place of where we need to be of getting all 600 homeless, all 600 of our unhoused neighbors off of Fremont streets and into permanent housing solutions with long-lasting jobs. So I think that one of my policies, which is creating the Fremont Opportunity Center, is going to help do two things. It's going to work with local Fremont businesses to work with them, incentivize them, and encourage them to commit to local hiring inside the city of Fremont, specifically of our homeless residents in Fremont, which is going to help connect those residents with jobs, as well as the development of cheaper and more affordable housing units inside of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Dolav. All right, Raj Salwan, you have one minute to address homelessness in Fremont.
Okay, well, homeless is a regional problem. It's one of the biggest issues facing us today. Unfortunately, there's not a silver bullet, that one solution that will fix everything. And so predominantly, it's got to start with housing first. And what does that mean? That means that we need to take people off the parks, off the streets, and get them into a permanent situation. And in some cases, that may mean getting them a motel room and then working on their issues. Many of them suffer from mental health issues. They have addiction or other illnesses, and many of them are disabled. So we need to work with them to try to fix their issues and try to get them off the street. We are paying for them. We are paying for them whether they're on the street or whether we house them. So we can choose to spend our money wisely to try to fix the situation and try to improve it rather than dealing with one crisis or the other. And if we are not able to help them, they will end up in our prisons or other places, which tend to be much more cost prohibitive. So I think we need to continue the path we are on and try to help the people and try to get them properly housed and make sure that we maintain safety for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Raj. Okay, let's go back to Teresa now. Your question is about traffic. Fremont has a traffic issue like much of the Bay Area. How do you plan to address that? And dealing with the app situation where people use apps to cut through neighborhoods, obviously, much to the dismay of so many people that live in your community. Teresa, you have one minute.
So Fremont, we have successfully have some of our streets taken off the Waze apps so that the people can stay on freeway and get to where they're going. But moreover, but we need to work with regional agencies that can help, you know, put in more mass transit. We have seen that Bard has finally gone to Mill Peters and Berriessa, and we need to, you know, continue to work so that those, these mass transits are easy for people to take. So people will be taking advantage of them. And I also, I do advocate for shelter, for shuttles up and down Fremont Boulevard to our major streets. I know that AC Transit, they do provide some free shuttles in Newark, but not in Fremont. So I will continue to work with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Now let's go to Dolav Gandler with your thoughts on the traffic situation in Fremont. You have one minute.
Thank you very much for the question. So this, again, like most other problems that we face in the city, are regional problems, and they are problems that need to be looked at as the, a lot of the solutions can come from the city level, but a lot of the solutions need to, in fact, come at the regional level. And through many conversations with people I've had, I've learned that one of the things that we really need to step up our efforts on doing is getting Fremont a bigger seat at the regional table. We are the fourth-largest seat, we are the fourth-largest city in the Bay Area behind San Francisco, San Jose, and Oakland. And yet, our representation in Alameda at these regional, at the regional level is too small for the needs of our people and our traffic needs and in order to sustain our public transit infrastructure. So I think that working to increase our regional partnerships, make sure that we have larger representations at regional level, of something that Ms. Kang just mentioned, working with AC Transit to provide those free shuttle services from, like, it's similar to the ones that are in Newark, from areas in Fremont that have the most amounts of high-density housing and providing those shuttle lines to be free of charge and taking Fremont residents directly to the Bard Station. I think that these kind of programs are going to help ensure that our systems of public transit, this is something very important to me, is making sure that our systems of public transit work together in a flow to allow people to get from one part of... Oh, sorry. Will we over time? All right, thank you.
Yeah, we are over time. Thank you so much. Raj Salwan, you have one minute to address the traffic situations going on in Fremont.
Thank you. Well, our region is blessed with a strong economy, but one of the downsides is we have a lot of traffic. And so in 2016, when I ran, traffic congestion was one of my top issues, and specifically cut-through traffic. And I had proposed several measures, like, for example, to reduce right turns or left turns or stop signs so that people could not get off the freeway and cut through our streets and clog up our neighborhoods. And so since then, we have been able to reduce the cut-through traffic by 33%. And in some streets, it is down like 90%. So we've had a dramatic improvement with the cut-through traffic. And we have forged partnerships with Waze, with Google, with all the different apps. The larger issue is that, I agree with Dolav, it is a regional problem, and that we need to work on this regionally. We have the job-rich areas of the Peninsula and the South Bay, which have all the jobs. And then we in the East Bay have to suffer with all the housing. So what we need to do is that if any city on the West Bay or South Bay wants to build more jobs like the Apple campus, then they need to make sure that they can mitigate the housing that's needed for their engineers and all their workers. And so that's the fundamental issue, I think.
That's about it. Thank you, Raj. We appreciate that. Let's move on to economic prosperity, as you were just addressing, Raj, for a moment now. Fremont, obviously blessed with some major corporations, you know, Tesla comes to mind. But with that, there are some pratfalls, namely the affordability of housing. Some folks are obviously complaining about their safety as the vehicle theft and the robbery rate is higher than the national average. So can you address those topics? They do seem to be in sync. Teresa, you have one minute.
Thank you. So yes, as we know, Fremont has many of advanced manufacturing and biomedical companies in our city. And in the last year, we have had Facebook adding one campus in right in my district, District One. And we, I have actually, you know, been, just last week, I had talked with the police chief on exploring the options of having branch offices of police stations so that, you know, because Fremont is big, we have over 500 miles of streets, and police officers cannot be everywhere at the same time. So we, we need to explore, you know, other options that have work in other cities so that our residents can feel safe in their community. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Dolav, you have one minute to address the economic goals for Fremont moving forward.
So in terms of the economic goals I have for the city moving forward, obviously, oh, sorry, I think my webcam has gone a little. There we go. So obviously, one of the most important things that we have to look at is ensuring that our city recovers properly from the coronavirus pandemic. And to me, one of the most important factors in doing so is ensuring that we protect the small businesses in Fremont. I am a believer that the small businesses of a city are their lifeblood, and they are what give a city its culture and people their food and services, as well as many jobs for Fremont residents. So I think that protecting our small businesses has to be our number-one priority for our economic recovery during the coronavirus. for our economic recovery during the coronavirus pandemic. And I think, like I said, one of my proposals of increasing grant funding from the city to our local small businesses is going to help with doing that. A timing of the question back to public safety, I know that was that was asked in the original question. There is our Fremont Police Department, like Mr. Solomon mentioned, is currently fully staffed. And they, I believe, are well equipped to handle the issues that Fremont is facing, especially if we can work to reduce the homelessness crisis in the city of Fremont. Because some not not too many people know this, but almost fifty percent of the calls for
Dolov, I think you're on mute, but I actually you've gone over your one minute. So we'll
Oh, I see.
Questioning over to Raj. Raj, please address how you plan to move Fremont forward economically.
Well, Fremont's a city that has to be for everyone. Give my family a shot, and I want to make sure that other folks that want to continue to stay in Fremont are able to stay in Fremont. And so we need to make sure our young people like Dolov and others, my kids, can live in our community as well as our seniors can afford to live here. And so we need to make sure that we continue to bring jobs at all levels and we continue to build that great economy that we have. Because we're doing so well, we've attracted the interest of outsiders who want to come to our city, and they do the thefts and the auto burglaries. And also, we have relaxation of policies at the state level. So I want to make sure on this next term that we have our community service officers and our police officers more visible, more engaged in our communities, doing more, you know, drive bys, just making sure the community is safe. And we invest in technology that can help solve some of these issues. So one, be able to predict where this crime is going to happen. And then those folks that are doing it in high scale or in gangs, that we can go and we can get them off the streets. So it's going to be an ongoing effort, but I want to make sure Fremont is a city that everyone can be proud of and everyone can live in. Thank you.
Thank you, Raj. Okay, and the final question for all of you.
Sorry, may I just add a small rebuttal, please?
I mean, did he? He didn't direct anything to you, so not at this
Okay, okay.
Finally, I want to ask you all about COVID-19 and how to assuage that situation, which is continuing to go on globally. Let's start with Teresa Kang. Teresa, you have one minute.
All right, thank you. So we in Fremont, we have actually been fortunate enough that many of our residents are able to work from home. So, you know, they with that you lessen the exposure to to outside, to mass transit, and and we are many of our residents are able to have their groceries and stuff delivered to their home. And so we have actually been able to keep our infection rate a lot lower than some of our surrounding cities. And we are also one of the first cities that put in the mask mandate before the California mandate. So we need to continue to do that. And and we have also gave grants and relief to individuals who are facing issues with, you know, not able to pay rent and we and also to small businesses for for grants to help them with the with the pandemic. But we were continuing to advocate for more funding for individuals and also for small businesses so that we can all because the pandemic is lasting a lot longer than we expected. And so we can all get over together. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Dolov Gandler, you have one minute to address the COVID-19 crisis and how you plan to do something about it in Fremont.
Well, thank you very much for the question. So the dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic, there's not one single thing that we can point to that's going to make the problem better or make the problem go away at all. There are a series of solutions that we need to undertake to in order to both keep our people safe and keep the city's economy happy and healthy. So what in order to keep our people safe, we need to ensure that everyone is wearing their masks and keeping social distancing. This means providing resources to local businesses to allow for them to reopen for in-person activities with proper protective equipment and social distancing in place. This also means promoting personal responsibility among Fremont residents. However, shifting it away from keeping people individually healthy, individual people keeping keeping safe and keeping up with best practices. I also think the city should expand its selection of COVID-19 testing sites for our city's residents. I want to see, I wish there was at least one testing site in each district of the city of Fremont to make testing easily accessible to any Fremont resident who needs to get it. And as well as this, my economic recovery plans will ensure that our city's budget stays balanced and our local businesses stay afloat and able to continue hiring and supporting their employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Dolov. And now let's go to Raj Salwan, your plan to address the COVID-19 situation.
So I think everything starts with our health and safety. And so we got to make sure that we maintain safety for our residents and make sure we let the data decide our decisions. So so that's going to be the paramount. And pretty much, I think we're on the right path. And as we emerge from this COVID crisis, we need to make sure we give resources to our small businesses with grants and support and make it easier for them to have pop-up patios and do all the things that we are doing and just continue to build upon that. And we need to do the reopenings gradually so that we can adjust to new changes and new data points. And I'm hopeful that hopefully by next year, we'll have a vaccine, hopefully. And then we can, you know, gradually get out of this thing. But it's definitely been a big challenge for our city. We've also suffered financially. It's been a huge hit to our budget. And so we'll be making some tough decisions. What programs do we keep and where do we cut? Because we have lost almost eighteen million from our current budget. And so we're making lots of cuts and making sure that we preserve vital programs such as public safety and all the other vital issues. So it's going to be a huge test for our city to make sure that we can emerge from this. And I'm confident that with our reserves and with our staff and our team, that we'll definitely be able to get through this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Raj. Okay, we are concluding this portion of this symposium in terms of the city council races, and I appreciate everyone being online. We've had such an influx of questions, and frankly, obviously, things are running a little bit longer than expected. So I don't think we're going to get to any more questions for all the city council folks, even though I have a lot of questions for you, but we have a limited format here. So let's move on to the mayoral candidates. And again, thank you all for being here. We really appreciate it. And for those of you just joining us, this is the 2020 Fremont Candidates Forum, sponsored by the Coalition for Civic Engagement. I'm Ravi Kapoor from Dia TV. We're broadcasting this across our platforms as well as Ding Ding TV here in the Bay Area and, of course, also on KAAP Channel twenty four in the South Bay. So now we're going to address the Fremont mayoral candidates, and we're very pleased to have everyone joining in today. I'll address them now. We have Lily May, who is the current mayor of Fremont, Naz Mahika Khan, Justin Shaw, and Vik Bhajwa Singh. They're all in attendance. We did invite Chris Hampton and Marlene Santilli. They did not respond. But we're very pleased to have all the folks that are here this morning. And we want to start with introductions. So let's get to Mayor Lily May, who is standing by. And you have two minutes to introduce yourself. Mayor May, please go right ahead.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for this wonderful opportunity to come and share with all of you. It's my pleasure to be able to stand for my fifth election representing our public. I started off as a community member, much like many of you, involved because of something important, which are my children. And so when I became a parent in the school district, I got involved not just complaining about issues, but being part of the PTA School Site Council. And as time came on, I saw there was a lot of issues with schools and overcrowding. So I ran and had the pleasure of representing us on the school board. Then afterwards, I was able to join city council because of my background in business and having been involved with many technology companies here in the Bay Area. And then four years ago, I had the privilege of becoming your mayor. During this period of time, it's been a very challenging and constantly changing evolving process. And some of the key issues that I focused on are being prepared for economic issues that have arose risen and kept us financially stable, fiscally sound. And then also in terms of emergencies from health, wildfire, and other issues such as social justice. And I've had the privilege of working with all of you in many community conversations and dialogues. And that's what I hope to continue. I know right now we're going through some very challenging times, and I appreciate the patience and partnership of so many different groups, such as the organizations that are hosting us today, because we cannot do this individually. We work in this in concert with all of you in partnership. And I look forward to that ability to continue that for the next four years as we're going through changes. And I also am very proud to share today about some of the issues that we're going to be talking about, such as COVID-19 homelessness, economic recovery, and how we can keep our community working well together. Thank you for the time to have this introduction.
Thank you very much, Mayor May. And now let's go on to Naz Mahika Khan. You have two minutes.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure being here with every one of you. A happy weekend. And I am really, really blessed and thankful for Ding Ding TV for having us. My name is Naz Mahika Khan, and I'm running for as a mayor of Fremont. Not only has Fremont been my home for over fifteen years after I've migrated from Fiji Islands, it has been my version of American dream. And it is where I, as a single mother, raised my son from a young boy to an active duty soldier in the U.S. Air Force, serving our country. It is where I found not one, just two, but two careers. One, as a manager at the U.S. Bank, serving a lot of Fremont residents, and another as a radio host with Radio Zindagi and this eleven seventy AM. As a radio host, I talk to thousands of people about their problem. And as a U.S. Bank manager, I help thousands of people solve their problems. So I've helped them get their loans for first time home buyer, for purchasing from selling houses, to start up the small businesses, and also to send kids to college as well as for the life-changing events. And this time, now those families of Fremont families are facing crisis after crisis, and they are facing a pandemic that actually threatens their health and also their jobs. And also, they are facing social unrest that is ripping apart the communities, and we are having a lot of division. So it is unfortunate that in this time, our leadership is failing on the accountability and transparencies. And they are most of them are just career politicians. And I'm not a career politician. I'm here as a voice of the people to help every one of them. And we understand, we know that the rents are being rocketed high and people are being priced out. Homelessness is out of control. And every other day, we feel the instances of violence crime. My top priorities are post-COVID economic recovery, public safety, homelessness, and parks and recreation. And I'm running to keep my promises, not to just make them. I'm running to solve the problems with a common sense and also not just to avoid them. I'm here to put Fremont families first, and I'm running to transform our city from all these issues that happening into a better, safe, and beautiful Fremont city. And I wish and I hope that we'll have a better mental health, but a physical and social well-being after going through all these issues that we are at this time. So we need to heal and we need to work together. And I wish to work with every one of you and get your goal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now let's go over to Justin Shaw. Justin Shaw, please introduce yourself. You have two minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Justin Shaw, the local choice in this Fremont mayoral race. I'm a lifelong member of the Fremont community, and I'm well known in Fremont for fighting for local issues, ranging from traffic congestion to equitable access to AP exams for Irvington and other FUSD schools. I'm the Democratic Party choice in this race, the only candidate endorsed by our local Democratic Party clubs. This includes the Tri-City Democrats, the South Alameda County Young Democrats, the South County Progressive Democrats, as well as statewide organizations like the California Young Democrats. I'm the Bard partisan choice in this race endorsed by Republicans, independents, and newspapers like the Bay Area Reporter and the Amritsar Times. I have very strong community support. I'm endorsed by the Fremont Teachers Association as well as groups like the Bay Area Cricket and the Sikh Community Organized for Political Engagement. Community leaders ranging from Sanjeev Gupta CPA to Sanjeev Gupta, Sanjeev Goyle, Chair of this year's Pan IIT 2020 Global Conference. In this race, I'm also the diversity candidate. I'm endorsed by the statewide organization Equality California, as well as the national organization Victory Fund. But most importantly, I feel like I am the people's candidate, the people's choice, the choice for Fremont residents who are fed up with the status quo and think Fremont is headed in the wrong direction. So these are my endorsements, but who am I? I am VP of a global IT company headquartered in Warm Springs. I teach as an adjunct professor of business law at Aloney College. And I give back to my community. I serve as an Aloney College Foundation Board Member and Chair of the Asian American Millennials Nonprofit. I've hosted cultural festivals for our local community and also this past summer, an online career workshop event for over two hundred of our local Fremont students. I graduated with honors from UC Hastings Law as well as Dartmouth College. And, you know, at the end of the day, I really just am a product of our community. I will fight to prioritize the community issues that impact our everyday life. My priorities are public safety, open development, and very importantly, transparent government. Justin Shaw for Fremont Mayor, and I am running to create a brighter future for all Fremont residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Justin. We appreciate that. All right, let's get to our questions now for each of the mayoral candidates. We'll start with Mayor May. Obviously, we've you've heard a number of the questions that were posed to the folks running for
I'm so sorry, is Vik Bhajwa saying anything?
Ravi, you
Is Rick? I'm sorry. My apologies. I skipped right over Vik. Let's let's introduce Vik Bhajwa saying, my apologies, Vik. Please, you have two minutes to introduce yourself. Oh, you know what, Vik? I think you are on mute. That's why I didn't see you. Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can. Thanks. Go go right ahead.
Yeah, morning, Ravi. Thank you to Ding Ding TV and Dia TV, including the Coalition. Getting right to the point, Kamala Harris is my hero. And I will not talk, you know, what they have been doing for the last four years. My immediate goal is to have a good public system, a public safety system, have an override on the police by constituting a police commission, and then a COVID-19 Recovery Task Force. And then I'll let the floor open for your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Vik. Appreciate that. Okay, let's get to the questions now. Mayor May, you are first up. And we're going to start back with that homeless topic that just so many people are would like to address. Please, you have one minute to address homelessness in Fremont.
Sure, I wish it could be that simple that we could address it in one minute. And that is one of the challenges, but I'm very proud of the efforts that Fremont has taken on. From when I started, we turned our homeless warming center to a warming shelter, and we served over five hundred individuals by not just opening on days where it's rain or cold, but on every single day from November through March. We also added our Fremont Clean Start Mobile Hygiene Unit, which allowed people the dignity of showers and clean laundry to help them and be able to provide the accessibility to be able to interview and to get ready for a good day. We also have, most recently, I think many people have highlighted that we've opened up our navigation, homeless navigation center. And that allows us to be able to connect people to the resources and services that are needed. In addition, we also have a homeless day center that is also managed by back near Irvington High School and right off of Grimmer, which is important to provide resources on a daily basis when they're trying to have things like technology and access. That's where we also provided during this period of COVID pandemic, some free testing, which I think is critical. And I'm proud to say that when we were providing the services in a pandemic like this, that we did not ignore our homeless and most vulnerable populations. We provided over four hundred thousand in small business grants, four hundred thousand in rental assistance, over two hundred fifty thousand from the county, over a hundred thousand face masks, and fifteen thousand surgical cloth-based coverings. And we've delivered at this point over fifteen thousand meals to help those who are vulnerable and at risk.
Thank you, Mayor May. Now let's go to Naz Mahika Khan.
Much more.
I know there's much more, but we we'll give you one minute. And if you want to address it further, we can certainly try to squeeze that in. Naz Mahika Khan, you have one minute to address homelessness. Please go ahead.
Thank you very much. It is absolutely one minute is not enough to talk about all of them. But homeless navigation center was opened on August thirty first. It took twenty eight days after that to even get started and no security. And there wasn't any of the proper system used for us to be able to go in and work with people. And there's only four forty people were supposed to be on homeless, but now it's twenty five. And during this time, when we think about having the weather change, COVID is hitting, it is really an issue for the six hundred and eight population to be taken care of. So my idea of having the homeless services is when I call them the lost dreamers, we need to have to make sure we take care of their housing, their food, and their clothing and everything. But we can have take care, we can take care at least like fifty percent to eighty percent and not taking four years, but as soon as possible. My idea of creating a housing facility, allocated location away from city and away from the residential areas so people are not disappointed, like just the Porrel Lake has about two hundred homeless population. To have smart communities with individual living spaces subsidized, housing and medical outreach, better services away from Fremont and have it on containers.
Yeah, thank you so much. We appreciate that. Okay, let's move on to Justin Shaw. Justin, you have one minute to address the homeless situation in Fremont.
Thank you so much for this important question. As many candidates during today's call have criticized Thank you so much for this important question. As many candidates during today's call have criticized the HNC debacle, as I would like to call it, was truly, had a truly atrocious process. Residents' opinions were not solicited, and the mayor herself actually was nowhere to be found for one month. She would not respond to emails. She would not meet people for one whole month because she didn't want to have that kind of conflict. And, you know, in general, homelessness is a big issue and requires true leadership to resolve. The county actually has funding for this, a total budget of fifty-three point two million to address homelessness. However, of this, Fremont has only received seven percent of total funding, whereas Berkeley has received thirty-one percent. And that is a huge mismatch in terms of ratio. And so that means that Fremont is not receiving its fair share of county funding. We need true leadership to work with county leaders to resolve this issue because we need to work better for our unhoused folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Mayor May, would you like to respond to his, his comments? You have thirty seconds.
Sure. I think that I wish we could get better funding, and that is one of the challenges. When we look at some of the programs and legislation that's being created, some people have cited in the past that I've challenged some of those policies, not because I don't think we need the funding, but because once we've endorsed or supported certain legislations, the allocations have been set. And that's what happened in this case. And that's why I've been, since I've been in office, fighting and advocating. And in fact, I led the charge with many mayors before a discussion in November of twenty nineteen where we were looking at additional funding that was set aside from Oakland, where they had eight and a half million, and twelve point one million was going to be divided by the other cities, and they asked for a proportionate amount based off the homelessness. But we were successfully able to argue that we are already significantly impacted, having spent eight hundred seventy-five thousand the first year I was in office, two point five million the second year, and over five million the third year.
So Robbie, I don't know if I can just cut in. I think the whole part of rebuttal was actually because, not for the statistical issue, but the fact that you would not meet with residents for one month. Like, do you deny this? Other council members can speak to this, Mayor May.
I'm going to give Mayor May fifteen seconds to address that, then we have to move on. Go ahead.
Sure. I have had plenty of opportunities and in fact, met with many different groups. And I've been with many council members where we've walked into community meetings, and those were everything from phone calls that we've had with groups, in addition to in-person meetings that many people were so personally attended. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. Vik Bhajwa Singh, you have one minute to address homelessness in Fremont. And please unmute yourself.
Thank you, Ravi. I agree with Justin, what he's gave info on HNC homelessness. And I hate to say this, that Fremont City has completely failed us in, in, you know, having some kind of roof, food, cot, and, you know, some compassion for the homeless. We call it homeless housing navigation center, which was nowhere to be seen for the last four years. It came into existence in August twenty twenty just for reelection bid, or some for the councilman's reelection bid. What my question is to everyone here, we are spending three million dollars for fifteen residents. BAC has a contract for three million dollars every year. Now, is there a viable finance management? I don't think so. So we need to find a permanent solution to this problem. By the, by the end of this year, we're going to have over a thousand homeless in Fremont. So let's not do a lip service here anymore. Lip service is all over for the last four years. Let's get, be constructive about it and do something serious about it. Thank you, Ravi.
Thank you, Vik. Mayor May, you have thirty seconds to respond.
Sure. I think what you're talking about when it comes to the housing navigation center, we have a fact sheet on that, and I'm happy to provide that link. We actually utilized heat funding, which is some of the housing legislation that we talked about, as well as establishing or using the homeless emergency aid block grant. We declared a state of emergency with homelessness as a council, so therefore we became eligible for access to that funding. And I can give you the breakdown if you'd be interested, which is in our fact sheet, which shows the funding that was awarded and how we're utilizing federal, state, and local funding and legislation to help us assist that. And that these are restricted one-time-use funding. So this funding wouldn't have been eligible to use for general operations for the city, but they're restricted specifically and targeted focused on homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to traffic now. That's another hot topic for folks in Fremont. Let's talk about how to address the congestion issues in Fremont. Mayor May, please, you have one minute.
Sure. So working on the legislations that pertain to traffic, here in Fremont, I'm very proud that we took the initiation to form a mobility task force and then have a mobility commission come out of that. We've created a platform and guidelines of our goals and checklist of things that we'd like to address. And that's why we've been able to accomplish some significant things. Fremont got brighter, not just because of the people. We changed to all LED lights when I first came into office four years ago. And that was something that was a major accomplishment, being that we are a city over ninety-two square miles. We also have been able to focus on things such as safe routes to school, where we had over five hundred issues that were raised, and we've already addressed over four hundred, and I believe we're addressing the remaining one hundred right now, which is one of the reasons why we were recognized nationally as the winner for youth traffic safety by reducing our major fatalities and accidents with our youth by over ninety percent since we've implemented some of those changes. But it's ongoing discussion, which is why I'm proud to serve as a representative on the Alameda County Transportation Commission, co-chairing discussions from six eighty hot lanes, express lanes, to mobility in terms of goods movement. And I also sit as the National League of Cities Advocate and Co-Chair for Transportation and Technology, which is important as we are one of the most green cities in terms of the number one EV chargers per city, and one of the best in terms of focusing on those technologies and emerging solutions for our communities, such as using Pony AI.
Thank you very much, Mayor May. We appreciate that. Naz Mahika Khan, you have one minute to talk about dealing with the traffic situation in Fremont.
City is actually not ready before we start thinking about building houses. So every year that we had been getting mayors and they've been just properties, we understand it's been there from before. So if our senior people, I've been very upset about the fact that they have just egged through all these changes about traffic congestion. So my question is, like, if we have a lot of houses are being built and they're not accommodated for the cars that are getting violated, the emergency vehicles are not able to maneuver, fire trucks are having problems with, and are taking those roads are getting smaller. We need to understand, like, why are we not getting roads that can be additional lanes and also wider? And the houses are being built and the other foreign vehicles are being transferring, going through, and people are complaining. You build five, twenty, fifty houses, and you multiply two cars with that, you are absolutely adding a lot of traffic on the road. So past years, two thousand six, Mayor May had actually promised that she'll control the traffic, she'll take care of it, but it's had doubled. So I believe we need to have to look into that, more lanes and more hybrid buses, so that we can have more frequent services. Also, easy transit can change into like more of the other public safe transportation and making sure that everybody is working together and having more automation system, more work-life balance in Fremont.
Thank you very much. Let's move on now to Justin Shaw. Justin Shaw, you have one minute to discuss the traffic situation.
Process question very quickly. You know, when we are doing rebuttals, are we rebutting specific questions? Or are we just using it as a way to?
Right. When the rebuttal is done, when someone is, if someone is, in a sense, criticizing someone or making a pointed remark at someone specifically, that person has thirty seconds to retort. So that's the.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to make a factual statement. The mayor was nowhere to be found for one month for HNC. She would not meet with people. Two, Fremont does not receive its fair share of funding from Alameda County for our homeless population by ratio. That's just a fact. All right. So on traffic, you know, in two thousand eighteen, I was the person in Fremont who led spearhead, spearheaded the conversation about introducing IOT to our traffic light system grid so that it could all speak to each other. This is a very non-controversial solution to address a very controversial and big headache, which is traffic congestion. You know, I live along Mission Boulevard, and we had ten developments happening at the same time on Mission Boulevard. Tractors were coming out during rush hour. This is poor city planning when you, when you allow these builders to come out and block traffic, you know, during that time period. The mayor mentioned the Mobility Commission. She actually introduced this in twenty sixteen, the Mobility Commission, but then she backed down on her own proposal because of pushback from the, the city manager at the time. And then after, in twenty eighteen, after she saw that the community really did care a lot about traffic, she reintroduced the Mobility Commission, and then that was how that situation happened. So that was two years worth of time where we suffered in terms of traffic and where we could have gotten things off the ground. You know, in general, we just need to connect our city, use IOT, smart technologies, because the technology is there. We just have to think outside of the box and really think proactively. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Justin. Mayor May, you have thirty seconds to respond to Justin.
Sure. I absolutely agree that we're not getting our fair share, which is why it's important when we're looking at our elected officials that we have representation on the county, county board of supervisors. Two of the county supervisors represent Fremont, and three represent other parts of the district. So it is a continual challenge. When it comes to having the balance of jobs and housing, that is why it's important for us to have a seat, as many people have mentioned, on MTC and ABAG. And it's not a decision that's determined by us in terms of volunteering or being involved, which is why I sat in a meeting the other night to over ten thirty PM, listening and talking about how do we balance these discussions? That's why also that I sit on the Alameda County Mayor's Conference and have written letters in conjunction with my fellow mayors to express the need that when we were building housing and we recognize the need for affordability, that it can't be done in isolation, that it needs to be done in concert with roads, with parks, with safe public safety, and the funding and resources that are needed for us to maintain the quality of life that Fremont demands and would love to see. It's been a challenge since the housing bills and legislations that have been created. In the first years when I was in office, were about fifteen a year, and currently they rake about two hundred a year that address housing and the ways to fast-track it, and also the impacts on funds. So these are things that we need to continually, as a mayor or a council, advocate for. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor May. Let's go now to Vik Bhajwa Singh. You have one minute to discuss the traffic situation in Fremont and how to fix that.
Thank you, Ravi. I think for the last four years, it's been really poor planning on the development part of it. As an example, I would give you the HNC, the Housing Navigation Center, modular buildings of eight thousand square feet cost us two point nine million dollars. Go to any developer, they'll do that for eight hundred thousand dollars. Number two, in July, the city authorized seven hundred fifty thousand dollars to do bike lanes. That was another reelection gimmick. We have been led by poor leadership in all phases, including development and traffic. Thank you.
Very, thank you very much, Vik. All right, let's move on to another topic now. Mayor May, did you want to counter anything that Vik said?
No, I, I just wanted to clarify for all people here that I definitely understand the concerns that so many people in the public are talking about with traffic, homelessness, and also the roles and desires are defined for the city council. It would have been really excellent, since we had a candidate briefing, for some of the candidates to actually show up. Because unfortunately, we only had one candidate show up for the candidate briefing, and that was Marlene Santelli, who came to the meeting and for that discussion to learn in that orientation from the development.
Okay, we're, we're getting a little bit offline here, so let's, let's move forward. And, and, and Justin, if you feel like addressing that, you can, and I'll give you a few extra seconds in your comments, but let's.
A few seconds. I feel like, you know.
Actually, Justin, not, not right now, because we, we are already way over time.
Okay.
But if you feel like addressing this during.
Who was directing it? Three of us, so, you know.
Again, I, I, we, we, let's try to adhere to the format, folks, all of us. We're all getting one minute. I'm trying to do the best I can under the constraints that we have. So let's, let's focus on economic prosperity for Fremont. Mayor May, you have one minute to discuss that. And again, Justin, I'll give you a little bit of extra time if you want to talk about the previous topic. Go right ahead, Mayor May.
Sure. When it comes to economic development, I'm very proud of our efforts from our economic development team. We've done everything from creating resources for their companies. We've worked with large and small companies in terms of programs such as small business grants, pop-up patios and permitting, so that we can do outreach. We've also encouraged resources such as permitting processes that are expedited to help companies such as our COVID nineteen responses on biomedical, to be able to create fast responsiveness and pivoting their businesses. So for example, a company that has been creating previously diabetes test kits to create COVID test kits, we have companies like that with Evolve and Evonix, where they've been able to deliver not just solutions for us in Fremont, but over one point five million test kits to date here in the Bay Area, as well as ventilators. So I would be happy to continue that conversation in the future, but there's many things that we're doing. And if you look at our city's website on economic development, and also thinksiliconvalley.com, you can learn more. And also, finally, I'm happy to share that we have Building the Better Bay Area, which is initiative that I co-chaired with Silicon Valley Leadership Group and their Silicon Valley Roundtable with mayors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, let's move forward now to Naz Mahika Khan. Please, you have one minute now to discuss Fremont's economic future.
So I believe that we need to have more jobs, revive small and medium businesses, create jobs with the corporate organizations also to tap into and leverage the corporations. So we can have, just like Tesla, they moved Tesla lives, and then we have Facebook. So we need to have at least Cisco or other network companies to come in here so that we can utilize and have our wealth of engineers work from Fremont. We could also have automation system of the administration jobs. Better paying jobs will also be able to help us into housing affordability that will also improve in our crime rate. At this time, the crime has increased about like three percent from past two years. And quality of life will increase also. We need to provide mental health also to our businesses that has been ignored many, many years, and also localism efforts, so that we can have more sustainable economy within Fremont. In order for us to be able to be more affordable, we need to have smaller units and smaller communities, smart communities built, so that people can come and visit and also invest here and live here. And we'll be able to have more housing facilities for the people who are paying less, and also physical and cybersecurity for our safety of the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now let's move forward to Justin Shaw. You have one minute to address Fremont's economic future.
So I'm just going to preface by saying, like, you know, given this format, I ask voters very carefully to listen to what the mayor is saying and what she is not saying. You know, as a former president of my high school speech in the Bay Team, there's an inherent advantage in being able to give the opening and closing to any question, because then you sandwich everyone else's comments within that. You know, Fremont voters expect their leaders to deliver results, not pad their political resumes and schmooze with other, you know, politicians at whatever meetings we are attending. So with respect to development, I will say that, you know, we have the coronavirus relief fund, also known as the CARES Act, that provides funding to counties, anyone over five hundred thousand individuals in jurisdiction. Alameda County has received, you know, two hundred ninety-one million dollars, but Fremont has not received, I think, enough. A lot of it is per ratio, but you do need leaders who can work with the county to get, you know, all the funding to cover enhanced sanitation, enforcing social distancing measures, cost of diverting educational staff, to develop online learning capabilities and so on. Fremont is not a friendly city for business, and that's something that I would revamp as mayor. It's a structural process improvement change that we need to work on and as opposed to individual initiatives. But even so, I really want to work, reach out to our minority-owned businesses, because a lot of our city resources are underutilized. It is, you know, you see the same people using city resources, but a lot of our non-native English-speaking businesses don't really have access to that pie. And I would want to proactively go out, create a new information communication system to make sure Fremont is accessible for all of our businesses, so that we can develop in a fair and holistic way. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Mayor May, you have thirty seconds to respond to Justin's comments.
Sure. I think that having access is important, which is why, as the president of Asian Pacific Islanders and being the first woman and minority mayor in the city of Fremont's history, I was happy to do a public service announcement to encourage that we are looking at COVID responsiveness that's available in multiple languages, which I did in conjunction with the Latino Caucus. And then also here with COVID nineteen and racial disparities and making sure that we have the access. I was able to chair some of these discussions with my fellow mayors from the Latino Caucus, Mayor Elzora from Rhode Island, Mayor Stony from Richmond, Virginia, and also with the Boston Health, Public Health Department Director. We feel that this is a continual conversation. I'm proud of the work that our council is working on with our economic development and outreach. We are looking at partnership, not just with the Chamber of Commerce, but with all of our historic business districts and with all of our ethnic business districts, which is why many of you that are on this call today, I've had the pleasure of personally meeting over the years as we start civic engagement discussions within our immigrant communities. And I'm proud to say that we have incredible diversity, which makes the Fremont fabric more richer. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mayor May. Let's move forward to Vik Bhajwa Singh. You have one minute to discuss Fremont's economic future.
Thank you, Ravi. I think racial injustice and recovery go hand in hand together. Unfortunately, we failed in the racial injustice when the mayor didn't take the knee as a, as a support to our labor force here in Fremont. Now, San Francisco Mayor established COVID nineteen Recovery Task Force. It's been since March nine, March twenty twenty, we haven't been able to establish one like that. Number two is very important. There are two legal aspects of our, you know, deficit, which is going to be eighteen million dollars. I think it's going to be more than that. So the legal aspect is that I would bring in a motion to sue China for Wuhan virus. They are responsible for this virus. We need to sue them, and whoever becomes the president, they're going to do that. We need to sue them and whoever becomes the president, they're going to do that. So why not as a city, we do that too? Thank you.
Thank you, Vik. Mayor May, do you have a retort?
Sure. I think one of the things that's very important for us as immigrant population and as a representative of the Asian Pacific American municipal officials as the president, I think it's one of the things that we have to create awareness of. We cannot simply target one ethnic group and blame them for all the ills that are out there. We have a responsibility to be looking at it scientifically, and we also have the responsibility of protecting others, which is why at times it has been so disappointing, and that's why I took action here to create awareness with hate crime pamphlets, with a public service announcements in partnership with the DA, and with creating media awareness when our restaurants were being targeted and small businesses and collaboration with my fellow council member Teresa Kang and with our ethnic media outreach, because we want everyone to feel respected, protected and safe to live in our city.
Thank you very much. And now let's move forward to COVID-19. Obviously, it's been a topic in this particular conversation. What is the plan for Fremont to address COVID-19 moving forward? Mayor May, you have one minute.
Sure. I think the plan to address COVID-19 in the city is not just responsibility for physical health and mental health, it's also fiscal health. And so making sure that we have testing, and some people have commented on that, they don't realize the amount of money that we've already spent. We spent $675,000 in test kits and over $2.5 to $3 million in labor, and that's something that we took out of our budget as an initiative first to be proactive. Since such time, I've been able to get approval and refunding for the $675,000 spent in test kits from Alameda County, and then we're working on the remainder funds because that's working through FEMA, of which 75% will be given to us and 25% then will have to be asked for payback from the county. Other things include updating our safety protocols, working with the county public health department and ensuring that we're reopening safely and with the guidelines that are given to us. It is a challenge when we talk about physical health as well as mental fiscal health, and that's why it's important for us to Kate Straumanns, not just for Tesla, but for all our manufacturers. We have over 900 manufacturers in the city of Fremont, and if we can follow best practices with our hygiene and PPE and also how we are physically distancing, then we can help us re-operate, and that's why it's important for us to come up with these better practices. And right now, the final thing that I'd say it's important for us to work on moving forward is the vaccination plan that we're looking at for regionally. I saw that the state was.
Thank you, Mayor May. We have to, we have to leave it there. Let's move forward to Naz Mahika Khan. You have one minute to discuss your plan to address COVID-19 in Fremont.
Have more free drive-through locations for COVID-19 and on-the-spot registration because at this time when we go for COVID-19 testing, we have to talk to our provider, whether we have our insurance or no, and, and then the wait time is longer. So we need to make sure that we have also more visibility, data alerts and more of the laws and guidelines to follow because some of the people are not able to just go out and check on the internet and their websites or even check out on the social media. They need to make sure that they understand what's going on in the city and how we are taken care of and what are the areas that we need to avoid going and how the schools and the businesses are doing. And businesses needs to open because they understand what guidelines to follow. So we need to have more notifications as well within the city. Outreach services to even senior facility and businesses for testing, quarantine services for our Alameda County for sure, and we need to have more of the businesses who have the sheets where they understand that if there is an issue where we go around and taking care of other people are being tested. Safe opening of all the businesses, proportionary measures, we still continue to take, everybody needs to be tested before we start our business or even start school. And I, I would like to understand, like, for the taxes or the money and the.
Naz, I think we have to leave that right there. We, I think you've exceeded your one minute, but thank you very much. We appreciate it. Justin Shaw, you have one minute to address COVID-19 in Fremont.
Thank you. I think the Fremont, our COVID-19 response has declined over time. The mayor mentioned fiscal responsibility, and one of the issues is that fact that we had a COVID-19 free testing site open for one to 1.5 months after shelter play started, but then we closed it. And the reason why was because we were assigning our fire department to initiate a lot of these tests when we can do things a lot more, a lot cheaper. And, you know, that includes things like integrating with the Fremont app that I want to do, scheduling, booking, remote booking, and just having a, you know, technology work for Fremont residents as opposed to having, you know, low-quality vendors providing these, these products that just really aren't up to market grade. And, you know, in general, what we can do moving forward, provide adequate data to residents so that they can make informed choices about their own lives. For example, providing COVID-19 positive test rates per zip code, also having the county disaggregated in the sense that we want to do it per period so then we can see live, you know, testings in the different zip codes. Also, you know, we need to be clear and consistent in telling our businesses when they can reopen, when not, because we saw a lot of inconsistency and then a lot of confusion by a lot of Fremont businesses. And, you know, even other things like the gift card program wasn't publicized to most of our businesses, including our minority owned businesses. And finally, I think having, thinking outside the box, this is why I want to have an ordinance saying like, if employees at Costco test positive, then we need to shut it down and then make sure they do actual deep cleaning until they can.
Thank you, Justin. That's, you exceeded your one minute. Thank you very much.
Right, so thank you very much.
Mayor May, you have 30 seconds to respond to Justin.
30 seconds. Thank you.
Real quickly, we do have data dashboard. It's run by the Alameda County Public Health, and I'm proud to say that when they first delivered it, it was only with the information of total tests and total deaths, and I was able to get them to vary and to implement greater visibility into the data. It is a challenge right now that's not just here with Fremont, but throughout the state and throughout the region, because every county public health department's doing their own process and creating their own dashboard, which makes it very, very frustrating for so many, I think, on this call and myself and our fellow electives too. It's something unprecedented that we've never faced and that we're trying to utilize technology to best address. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vik Bhajwa Singh, you have one minute to address the COVID-19 crisis in Fremont.
Thank you, Ravi. First of all, I would eliminate the racial injustice by incorporating a public, I mean, Fremont Police Commission headed by a judge who can pacify everyone and make this a safer city. And number two, I would copy paste San Francisco Mayor's COVID-19 Recovery Task Force. And number three, my earlier comment was not targeted to any particular community, but all said and done, the virus came from Wuhan. So I would not be defending the Consul General of China here who had secret meetings in the city hall. I would sue them. I would take them to court and sue over a billion dollars, bring in a motion so they are legally liable for it. Thank you.
Thank you much, very much, Vik. Okay, so I'm going to adjust things and I'm going to, because the city council portion of this conversation really took an extended amount of time. I want to give each mayoral candidate one minute to sum up their, their candidacy, and we'll start with Mayor May. Mayor May, you have one minute to conclude.
Sure. I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity to come here today and to listen to our concerns and how we are hoping to serve all of you. It is a very challenging time, and I'm proud that because of my advocacy with fiscal responsibility and community outreach, I have the support of many organizations, starting with the Mercury News and the East Bay Times, because they recognize my fiscal responsibility. I also have the support of all of my council members as well as the majority of the mayors in Alameda County. I also have the majority of the board of supervisors and also importantly, the Asian Pacific American Democratic Club. They recognize my leadership and the work that I do here in the community, but and also working with businesses, both labor groups as well as realtors and different community members. I think that it's one of the things that I really value is the opportunity to work, listen and to help all of you, and this is something that we can do together, and I look forward to the opportunity to continue to do so for the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor May.
Thank you for your time today.
We appreciate it. Thank you for being here. Naz Mahika Khan, you have one minute. Naz, you're still on mute and your video's not showing. You have one, one minute to do a concluding remark. Go right ahead.
Thank you very much. It has been a pleasure being here on Ding Ding TV. Thank you very much, everyone, for having us and for the opportunity to speak. COVID-19 consequences and losing of the jobs of my friends and social unrest of the communities and overdevelopment, but just the traffic definitely is one of the reasons that why we have to get together because the quality of life is diminishing. And apart from the unforeseen circumstances and uncontrollable issues that we are unable to take care of, we need to take care of all the issues, unite together and come together with the common sense and also resolve the issues, the complex issues. We need to rebuild our economy and our nations and our trust between our city offices and also with the police officers and the confidence with the relationship with our constituents. As a single mother, I would like to be part of everybody's life because I understand how difficult situations we went all through, and I can really relate to people and be able to be the nice advocate for all of them to take care of together because this is the time we need to heal and come together and be able to make a rebuild the quality of life.
Thank you very much, Naz Mahika Khan. Thank you. And now let's move on to Justin Shaw. You have one minute to wrap things up.
Thank you very much to everyone for, for today. I think that for me, I want to make it very clear that we are at a moment in history where we need to decide on where we want to go for the next four years for our city. We have seen a lot of things happen in the last four years, and public safety is a big issue for me because I want to focus on the crimes that affect our quality of life the most. We have seen an increase in car break-ins, in burglaries and in theft, record theft in recent years. Overdevelopment is a big issue for me, and, you know, we can't be lying about who is funding our campaign. I'm very concerned about the fact that the mayor met in secret with a Chinese Communist Party official last year, and even more so concerned that on her, on her Form 460 filing statement, she actually lied to the community about whose donations she's receiving money from. She is funded by developers, PACs and labor, and she is supported by labor unions, including the Alameda County Building and Construction Trades Union, you know, after she said that she wouldn't take any special interest, support or money. And I think that Fremont residents really deserve to have a candidate who cares about them, who really cares about these issues and who they can trust to fight for these community issues. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Justin. And finally, let's go with Vik Bhajwa Singh. You have one minute to conclude.
Thank you, Ravi Kapoor. Thank you to Coalition. Thank you to Ding Ding and thank you to DITV. You all have seen the last four years. It's time for change. Let's not do things which they have been doing just for reelection bids. They were sleeping for the last, you know, three and a half years. Choose someone who you can trust, who can start the job day one. I humbly ask for your vote. Give Fremont a new mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right, that concludes this event featuring Fremont candidates for mayor as well as city council. I want to thank everyone for being here. I know it's a, it's a big effort to come out here and, and, and all the folks that tuned in. We have quite a bit of engagement online with all these questions, and frankly, we've blown way over time, so we'll have to do a much better job in the future to condense this. And the reality is, these folks only had one to two minutes to get their thoughts across, which is very difficult in this format. So I really want to thank everyone for being cordial and respectful and, and getting their points across, and this has been terrific. So again, my thanks to the Coalition for Civic Engagement. It's a nonpartisan organization encompassed of nine different groups. And of course, our folks at DITV, thank you for putting us on. You can, this event will be rebroadcast on TV on KAP Channel 24, as well as on our YouTube and Facebook pages. You can check that out. And also want to draw your attention to an event that we're doing this afternoon at 12 noon on DITV. There's a debate on Hindu-American issues involving Republicans and Democrats involved in the presidential campaign for both Biden and Trump. That's a 12 noon. You can stream that on DITV's YouTube channel, which you may be on right now. So thank you all so much for joining us. And also, there's a San Ramon Candidates Forum next weekend at 1 PM, and we'll have more information on our respective web channels. Again, thank you all for participating, for engaging, and best of luck to all the candidates on November 3rd. We will see you later.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Be well, stay healthy.